We want to get all of you in. There's some seats in the front, don't be shy. Sandy, go let him sit by him.
But I mean it would actually take up the back end of the yard. Well, yeah. Well, and there's one over here. I noticed that someone missed everybody else. They'll put kind of a shed in the backyard. Not quite ways up, it looks kind of weird, but probably not that bad.
Start with the pledge of allegiance. Start with the roll call.
Mayor Steem. Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright. King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda with changes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. I also need a motion for approval of minutes from August 6th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Alright. We're going to start right away with recognitions, awards, and updates. And we are delighted to welcome the Austin Youth Soccer Team and coaches. And invite a coach to come up to the microphone and tell us about your wonderful season and introduce your team.
My name is Bernie Bolt and I am a member of the Austin Youth Soccer Association Board. And I'm going to speak on behalf of the first coach, Jason Senni, who's unable to be here, I think. And so if your team could stand up real quick and maybe say your name, starting over here. Real loud. CJ. Good. And so this is some of the U-11 team. And they have actually had a perfect season. And they went into the playoffs and they lost in the championship game, so they got second place for their division. And so they did a really good job. Last two years they've done really well, so up and coming stars.
What's the age range of your...
So this team here would be 11-year-olds.
Okay. Congratulations.
Yep. So thanks, guys.
Good job.
And then I'll also then speak on behalf of myself, coach of the U-15 team, so 15-year-old boys. And so I have, many of them are already standing at the back here, so I'm not sure if there's any more. And so go ahead and introduce yourselves, guys. And so we're missing a few from my team. Me, Gree, Poe, Casey, our goalie, Casey Berg, and a few others. And we did not have a perfect season, but overall we went 18, 2, and 1. This year, we were first place in the state tournament. This is our third year in the state final game. So the last three years has been unfortunately second place, second place, but now first place. And so we've got a really good group of boys and they work really good together. And so it's exciting to watch them play. And I just wrote down a couple of things real quick before the U-18 team comes, just kind of a fun, approximate perspective on things. With the families that drive, we put together about over 10,000 miles this summer. We bought over 300 value meals. We bought over $1,000 or 1,000 gallons of gas. And the boys played over 1,600 minutes of soccer. And so just kind of a fun little thought there, but they did a really good job and so we're thankful for that. We actually had five teams this year go into the postseason. And finally then the last coach here will come. So thank you very much for allowing us to come.
Yes, I'd like to echo what Bernie said. Just thanks so much for recognizing what's going on in the community. We appreciate that. My name's Corey Getz. I am the coach of the 18-team. And we ended up our season at 17, 1, and 1. We had our one tie was against the same team that we played in our state championship game. And we tied them through regulation and stayed tied through overtime and then we lost in a penalty shootout. So tough way to end the season, but it's a great group of students and worked their tails off all year and had a really great season. As Coach Bernie mentioned, there was also a U-16 team that was in the state tournament and a U-14 team that was also in the state tournament. So we had a great success and as he said, there's a lot of great future stuff coming here for the Austin Boys Soccer Program. They've already had great success in the past and we're looking forward to what they're going to do here in the fall, too. So thanks so much for having us in.
Were any of your team members here?
One player here.
Stand up and I'll give you...
If I could just say this also, we had many coaches that were previous players in the last few years from the Austin High School Program. And so it's been fun to watch them come up through the program and then come back in to help us coach. And so we had Sam Bailey, Corbin Munger, and others that were, Ryan Kempin, and...
Are they here to stand up?
They're not here unfortunately. Their coaches now, they're off in college.
Oh.
But they were back this summer to help us coach. And so it's fun to watch them come back through and help coach, so thank you.
We also thank all the family members that supported their team members and it's so exciting to have this great program in Austin. Thank you. Thank you. And you can stay for the meeting, but you probably don't want to. You're free to go if you wish. Thank you so much again. We have another under awards and recognition. We have a proclamation for Attendance Awareness Month. So I'll read that now and Sue Mouse will take the proclamation, or I believe, or will you take it?
I'll take it.
Okay. Do you want to speak before I read it?
Go ahead if you'd like. Whereas, good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. Whereas, chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences or just two days, two of three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas chronic absence predicts lower third grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout, it weakens our communities and our local economy. And whereas attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps that undermine student success. Chronic absence particularly exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers since students from low-income families are both more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine what barriers they face to attending school and what would help them attend more regularly. And whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend time reviewing for students who miss lessons. And whereas chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. So therefore, our mayor, Thomas A. Steem, does hereby proclaim September 2018 as Attendance Awareness Month. And we hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially.
And that is for you.
Alright, thank you. Well, good evening, members of our city council. I am Janie Gibson. I'm the executive director of Austin Aspires. On behalf of Austin Aspires, thank you for proclaiming September as Attendance Awareness Month in the city of Austin. By doing so, we are joining cities all across the nation who are raising public awareness about the importance of school attendance. Just like attendance is important in soccer practice and at games, school attendance is important as well. Research indicates that even two absences a month, whether they're excused or unexcused, two times a month that children are not in class can negatively impact a child's academic success. Chronic absence can influence whether a child reads proficiently by the end of third grade and even if the child is able to graduate on time. Thank you for encouraging the young people in our community to attend every school, to attend school every day by making the recognition of September being the Attendance Awareness Month in Austin.
Jane, you can take the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for your good work. Okay. We are going to go on now to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities update. Elizabeth Waifel is here to give us an update. Thank you.
Yes. Hi, there. My name is Elizabeth Waifel and I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak to the council today. I think I've met many of you before, but I am with Flaherty and Hood. I'm a senior attorney lobbyist and I work with the Coalition. I really appreciate this opportunity. The city of Austin is one of our most active members and has been a strong supporter of the Coalition, so really appreciate this opportunity to talk about the legislative session. And I apologize that we're doing this old school. It's kind of fun, but I think I misunderstood the setup here, so I apologize about that. But for those in the audience who aren't familiar with our organization, we are a group of 97 cities and you'll note that number's up quite a bit over the last couple of years, but we focus on issues that are common to greater Minnesota. LGA and property taxes, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, and environmental regulation. We're going to talk a little bit about this session. Now, even your sessions are considered the short session and they're typically focused on policy and the bonding bill. This year, however, there was also a significant focus on how the state was going to respond to the federal tax changes made at 2017. There was also a need for a significant bonding bill because we've been kind of falling behind with years where we're not having a bonding bill or where it just isn't that large to address all the projects. We were also looking at a budget surplus. And let me tell you, anytime you have a budget surplus, legislators seem to want to spend it, whether through tax cuts or spending, but man, can't just let it sit there. And then finally, for those of you who are familiar with the intricacies of state-to-government, we hadn't been able to pass a pension bill for three years. So that was also weighing over everybody's head. However, going into this session, things from the start probably weren't in a great space between the governor and the legislature. You may remember last year Governor Dayton vetoed the legislative funding, which meant not a lot of happy feelings there. Razor-thin majority for the Senate. And then with the whole controversy over is Senator Fischbach, you know, in the Senate or lieutenant governor or both? But it made it for interesting challenges, all on top of being an electioneer for the House and for the governor's office. Now, our strategy focused on a number of different things. The bonding bill was a big strategy for this year, trying to get more money for water, wastewater, and then some other items like the BDPI program. Continuing to educate legislators regarding the high cost of regulatory compliance, and that's something actually, a number of folks from Austin, particularly Craig Clark and some others, have been real helpful in trying to work with us on that. Continuing on LGA advocacy, maintaining our monitoring corridors of commerce, continuing city street advocacy, and trying to highlight the childcare shortage.
Just to interject, when she's talking about LGA, in case everyone isn't aware, that stands for Local Government Aid Program.
Thank you.
We use those short...
Yes, yes, and I sort of forgetting about that. Well, the really big thing again that we worked on quite a bit this year is working on the water and wastewater infrastructure funding. And last year, basically as a result of our efforts sort of leading up to it in 2016 and 2017, we saw the largest amount of funding for the Public Facilities Authority. And what the Public Facilities Authority does is helps make cities, provide money to cities to pay for sewers, wastewater, and drinking water. And that was $130 million last year. But that is just a drop in the bucket compared to what the need is, no pun intended. But our proposal this year was for $167 million for the grant programs. The other thing we proposed, and this is something we're going to be working on for the next couple of years, is a supplemental grant program that will pay high costs where the PFA programs are not adequate. And I'm sure as, you know, you guys are staring down the barrel at it projects, you probably understand this, but one of the challenges we are seeing right now is that, you know, the PFA programs are great and it's a good agency. However, even when a city, you know, qualifies for the maximum amount allowed under statute, it isn't always enough to keep sewer rates at an affordable level. So what we did is we developed a proposal for a supplemental grant program that would basically provide additional money to cities in one of two situations. First, what would be, when you're building a new sewer facility, but basically either if your project would drive your rates over two times what the metro average would be or it would, you're not even receiving half of your project cost, the supplemental grant program would make up that difference. And it's, again, it's in many ways like LGA, trying to make it so all cities can afford to provide the infrastructure that they need to be providing to their citizens and doing it in a way that doesn't bankrupt the cities. Really active lobbying on this. We did press conferences, guest columns, multiple legislative hearings, really made it so that we were seen as the go-to organization on this issue at the legislature. We did see at the end of the day $123 million in the bonding bill. A good number. We'd still like to get it up close to that 167. The other challenge with the number was that it included new appropriation bonds that were basically backed by what you could think of as the lottery proceeds. And this was very controversial and we were worried that there could be a governor's veto of a very important grant project, a grant program called the Point Source Implementation Grant Program. The governor had reservations about it. He did sign it. Hopefully in the future, we can move towards a program that people are all going to agree with because it's very much needed. We also had other results on environmental. And I'm not going to go through all of them. If you look in your packet, which I will distribute after, or did I give you the packets? No.
It's in their packet.
Okay. That has the, a list of all the environmental activities that we did. The policy developments in the bonding bill. One of the things now is that the MPCA must consider the debt to service loads when developing compliance schedules, which we think is very important. Enhanced regulatory certainty, which means that if you are upgrading your wastewater facility, you will not have new requirements imposed on you for 16 years, basically to allow you to catch up in paying for it. And there's a lot of other environmental activities detailed in our report. And then moving on to transportation. The transportation drama really, that also kept us on our toes at the legislature. With the House and Senate really trying to, you know, this is something we've been trying to tackle for years. House and Senate had different approaches to how it should be addressed. The Senate did not want to put any funding towards roads. The House wanted to use some of the surplus money towards, you know, one-time spending on roads. We supported that proposal and it also included ongoing funding for city streets as well as money for what's called the corridors of commerce, which is a program that provides money to some of those important roads that connect our cities like Highway 14, you know, actually, I mean, at some point, you know, theoretically could affect 90, but it's those big highways that really support commerce. But the big issue we had to tackle first was the constitutional amendment. This was a proposed amendment that would dedicate sales tax money from auto parts to roads and bridges. And that would be, you know, it was estimated it could be $300 million taken away from the general fund and dedicated to roads and bridges. It did include a new dedication for small city streets and it was authored by the House and Senate Transportation Chairs. As you may know, we were very opposed to this and along with a number of other groups. If you're wondering why we were so opposed to this, for those of you who've been doing this for a while, and we're going to talk about local government aid next, but one thing we have experienced is when the state government faces a budget deficit, they go after programs like local government aid, you know, county program aid, those aids that really provide help to our local government because they go for things that they think can be easily cut. So it's been our experience that dedicating money like that in the Constitution is not a good fiscal policy and it harms our communities. So that's why we opposed it. It did pass in the House. It stalled out in the Senate. It could come up again and we will continue to oppose it. Corridors of Commerce. Now, this is again that program I mentioned to you. $400 million was appropriated last year. And, you know, they were also coming up with a draft scoring system. We submitted comments on the draft scoring system. They listened to us on some things, not others. But when they announced the projects under this new scoring system on May 1st, now, I don't know if you look closely at your screen if you can see this, this is how the corridors were funded back in 2013 to 2015. I'll hold it up a little bit closer even, but if you look, those little squiggly orange lines, green lines across the state, really the program was a great, you know, benefit to the entire community, or excuse me, to communities throughout the state. However, for 2018, when they made the announcement, you see there's not a lot of squiggles throughout the state. In fact, I'm going to show you the blow-up here. This was the greater Minnesota money, that little spike towards Elk River and that spike towards Albertville. Both very nice communities, but not what many of us would think in that sort of traditional definition of greater Minnesota. And that's where all of the corridors of commerce was going, either to those two cities or to the Twin Cities metro area. And if you're familiar with our organization, we don't take things like that lying down. So we worked on this quite a bit. We were very critical of this project selection, really engaged greater Minnesota media on this and asked for the legislature to make it right. And so what ended up happening was, is that in the bonding bill, they allocated $400 million towards corridors of commerce with a direction to fund the next highest scoring, sort of what we would think of as real greater Minnesota projects. And so as a result, we saw more funding on Highway 14, you know, up towards Rochester, Owatonna area, and then over at Highway 23. So again, it took a lot of effort, but it was kind of that greater Minnesota coming together to make sure that we were getting some things done. So again, it's a little harder to see on this, but you know, it's that area, that 23 area, that 14 area that we were happy to see taken care of. Then, getting to local government aid. Right, this year we did introduce a bill, two bills on local government aid. And one of them was to increase this amount of money by $13.5 million. That would get us back to that level of where we were at in 2002. The other bill that we introduced would update the bill need factors. And for those of you who are not familiar with local government aid, what it does is help all cities across the state sort of basically even out the differences in tax base. And one of the things we were finding is that we, you know, did a significant update to the formula in 2013, but it needed some tweaks to adjust for things like inflation and other pieces. So we introduced those two bills to try and make those changes done. The challenge we faced at the legislature though was that federal tax conformity really sucked sort of the air out of the room and it was hard to get discussions about anything else. And so there was very little done sort of on tax pieces. And at the end of the day, quite frankly, the tax bill was vetoed because the governor and the legislature couldn't come together. But for those of you, again, not familiar with local government aid, you can see what a significant portion of, you know, Austin's budget, this makes up. So this basically shows sort of the history from 2002, which was when we saw significant cuts in the state. And then we saw a slight increase, but it really has not kept up with inflation. If we would have, our proposal would have increased your LGA by about $300,000 with the new factors and the new funding. And so it's something we would have liked to have seen. We will make that a top priority next year. I'm kind of moving on to the next couple of projects. The one issue, again, you may have been hearing about us, from us, and you may have been telling us about, the challenge that a lot of our cities are facing is the lack of childcare in greater Minnesota. So we've been working with the Greater Minnesota Partnership to try and introduce some legislation and work on this issue. Couple different things we worked on, advocated for grant funding to build and expand childcare centers and to train more childcare providers. We did get some money for the childcare grant program in what was called the Omnibus Omnibus Finance Bill, the supplemental finance bill. The challenge we ran into this legislative session was the legislators put all of the budget bills into one gigantic omnibus bill of 1,000 pages. And anytime you have a bill that large, you're going to have good things in it and you're going to have bad things in it. And the governor threatened to veto it if it was that large and he carry-through on his veto threat. So there was some stuff we weren't crazy about in it, but there were some things we wanted like city street funding and the childcare program. So we're hoping, you know, moving forward that they try perhaps not quite such a large bill approach. Now, another thing that we've been working on for years, I think you may be familiar with this because I know Austin has taken advantage of it, is the BDPI program. Sorry, that is my phone. The Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program. We helped create this program a number of years ago, but by the beginning of 2018, the money that had been put into it was already spoken for. And so we sponsored a bill for $20 million. And the challenge with the bonding bill was that they set a target of 825, so we were happy to get $5 million in there for that program. Now, looking forward to this coming year, 2019, this is going to be a significant year of change. We are going to be, I think y'all know, we're going to have a new governor. It's going to be either Governor Walz or Governor Johnson. And I think that either one of them will probably have pros and cons for our communities. The election in the House could also flip majority. I don't, you know, right now I'm not willing to predict the likelihood of that happening. There's also a Senate special election that in theory could also flip the majority there. I think that is less likely to happen, but there's a lot of unknowns going into what will be a budget year next year. And what that means is it's hard to predict whether we have a surplus or a budget deficit. And it will, I think, ultimately impact, you know, what we're going to be doing. We know we will be pushing again for that local government aid increase. We are going to be working on developing a comprehensive package to address childcare shortage because again, this is something we're hearing from all of our communities. Continuing to make water and wastewater infrastructure a priority, I know that's important to Austin. And then looking for permanent additional funding for city streets. You know, we've secured some funding for cities under 5,000. We want to expand that to cities over 5,000 and make it permanent. So important priorities. And then... Sorry, our upcoming events. The Fall Conference is in Alexandria. That's going to be a great event. You can tell by the date, that's going to be right after the election. At that point, we'll have a pretty good sense, at least preliminarily, what we'll be facing. Again, you know, we know basically what we'll be working on, but how you do it and your tactics really will depend somewhat on the election outcome. Our Legislative Action Day is the most popular event that we hold every year. If you can make it for that, I would highly advise it. And then our conference next year will be in Bemidji. So, you know, we had ours down here a couple of years ago. You guys were very welcoming. I hope you guys can return the favor, come up and visit them in Bemidji. So, but again, I want to thank you for your support of our organization. Austin's a very important member. You know, Mayor Steem is on our board. Craig Clark has been on our board and is very, very active. He's done a great job helping us out at the legislature and we really appreciate that and we really appreciate everything you all do. So, is there any questions? That's a lot of information, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We'll move forward with the consent agenda with the addition to that. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
All right. And item five is reviewing a tax abatement application from Nathan Stensel. Craig?
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, and members. Before us is a tax abatement application from Nathan Stensel and Burton Pleal Trust, as they're the current landowners of the property. It's an estimated six million dollars in project with eighty-two units of multifamily. Just to give members a perspective, one of our council members especially always references our housing study, and how are we stacking up this project would represent nearly forty percent of our estimated two-hundred-and-seven unit need by 2025. So gives you in part why we're so excited to see this project. It is in conformance with our abatement policy. Council action is requested to approve, and this is a public hearing.
Questions from the council? Are there members of the public that would like to just come up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Knoll. I'm here today to share my thoughts on the tax abatement for the proposed eighty-two unit apartment complex north of Walmart on Twenty-First Avenue Northwest. I should preface by the fact that despite being an Austin resident for many years, and I remain to be an active member of the community, I am currently a resident of Rochester, largely due to the availability of market-rate housing near food, shopping, and other amenities. I should also state that my knowledge of this apartment complex proposed by the Stensel Group is largely comprised of information gathered by word of mouth and a KAL-TV news article. However, I saw this as an opportunity to share my experience as a Rochester defector and how it is, and how it is projects like this that will draw young adults from cities like Minneapolis and Rochester to Austin. I am speaking in favor of approving the tax abatement on the condition that the developers cite the project in the Central Business District instead of at its current location. Citing the project downtown would provide residents with easy, non-automobile-reliant access to local businesses, Hormel, the library, and the new recreation center. The relative density of downtown in comparison to the northwest Austin incentivizes residents to walk and to use locally-owned services downtown as opposed to chain stores in the northwest part of the city. I've spoken with others who share my sentiments. The owners of Gravity Storm Brewery, for example, agree that the downtown-sited apartment complex would benefit their business more than the northwest site would. Residents of the Village Cooperative in northwest Austin are also concerned about the additional traffic in their dense neighborhood, especially on top of the existing Fox Point development. Should the developer choose not to work with the city to find a location alternative than the current one for this complex, I would ask that they work with the city to propose a plan to provide a rapid transit option to those residents so that the Central Business District does not lose out on the opportunity to benefit from this project and does not help promote a car-reliant future for those residents in that apartment complex. All in all, I'm very excited that medium-density development is coming to Austin. I hope that the city can work to incentivize these developments in the future downtown so that the vision of a sustainable city with a youthful, thriving downtown can be realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. Any questions or comments? Craig?
Yeah, Mr. Knoll, I guess for your benefit, we did work quite extensively with the developer to look for a Central Business District site. Certainly, it's within his prerogative to go wherever eligible zoning allows. We do have to make an adjustment on the zoning for partially on that site, but we're, we expressed that, we shared some of the sentiments that came from the mayor's ad hoc committee on housing and other discussion groups that we've had with major employers. But at the end of the day, it was, he was interested in moving forward and had the site availability in that location. So thank you for your comments.
I think the good news is, as Craig already mentioned, this project will address forty percent of what we need in terms of housing, so I don't think we have to choose either this project or a downtown project. I think ultimately, we'd like to see both go forward. It just so happens this is the first one out of the gate.
And what Gravity Storm might lose, the Angry Hog might gain.
It's also worth noting, along with what Councilmember Haley just said, that one of the priorities that we're presenting later on in the agenda as a request to the Hormel Foundation is called a targeted area for redevelopment, which is adjacent to, it's in the downtown area near the post office. So that's one, another area that we're working on to make development more amenable to, you know, to somebody like this, that they would take a look and say, okay, there's a good spot for a development. So we do, we are working on a variety of ways to make somewhere downtown-centered development happen. Thank you. Is there anything else there? Then we need to, we need a resolution to reviewing a tax abatement application.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have, we need a motion to approve the 2019 Hormel Foundation grant applications. Tom?
Yes.
Before council tonight is the final ranking based on the work session we had last meeting two weeks ago, which outlined council's priorities for the Hormel Foundation grant requests. As Councilmember Large Anderson noted, targeted area redevelopment for three hundred thousand dollars came in first place with the highest priority of council. Second was the pickleball courts. Third, nature center education programs, and then all the way down to number nine, electric vehicle promotion. The Hormel Foundation will meet with their contributions committee to go through all the requests for the community, and probably the second meeting in December will have the final grant amounts that have been allocated to each of the agencies. So at this point in time, we would request council approval of the ranking so that we can submit them to the foundation.
We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just like to note for the public that we make a recommendation to the Hormel Foundation. They choose, you know, they certainly look at our recommendation, but they don't always necessarily follow in our order of priority. Okay. Next, we have a motion, we'll need a motion to approve the honorary council member program. Craig?
Sure. Since our last work session, we've made some adjustments to the proposed program. They were included in your packet. Mr. Baskin is here this evening to add further comment, and I'd ask him to come forward and share continued thoughts. Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve the honorary council member program.
Good evening. Jason Baskin, Chair of the Human Rights Commission. And as a follow-up from the last work session, incorporated council feedback into the proposal that you see in your packet. Just to re-ground everybody, this was a key recommendation coming out of the strategic welcoming plan, and we had kind of segmented stuff that we want to do over the next twelve months and things that we want to do within the next one to five years. This was what we considered low-hanging fruit within the next twelve months, and so we believe that we've dealt with any of the legal issues with the original proposal and that this will be a very positive step forward towards Austin, continuing to turn that vision of being a welcoming community into reality by getting emerging leaders more connected to city government. A couple of the key highlights, the mayor will appoint people for a term of three months, and that can be anybody from within the community. We've already had some pretty good interest from some folks. Get an opportunity to get the council packet, attend the meetings, and so kind of see government in action on a local level. And then, both at the end of each meeting as well as at the end of their three-month term, the opportunity to do a little bit of a presentation on what they've learned, how they're going to take their work, and translate that to being more engaged in the community. And so just really a good opportunity to take emerging leaders who want to get more connected to local government and connect local government to those emerging leaders. So would definitely encourage adoption and a very positive step forward for our community. Be happy to answer, Jane. Any questions?
Questions?
Assuming approval in just a few moments, how soon will this process start? Do you have, do you know?
I would think within probably the next couple of months.
I'm hoping that we could start it in October, so you'd have that last, the three, last three months of...
Yeah. I like it.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Any, anything else? All right, we need a motion to approve the honorary council member program.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion, next, we're, it will be, we need a motion to appoint Steve Greenman to the Austin Utilities Board with the term expiring December thirty-first, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All on paper?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Number nine is awarding a contract with SEH for wastewater treatment plant main pump house electrical upgrades. Stephen?
Yes, with pending regulations that we are working through with the MPC at the treatment plant, we've been very selective with the projects that we bring forward until those regulations are in place. But this project in front of you tonight is for upgrades to some electrical control panels in our main pump house or lift station. We anticipate that that main pump house lift station will be in place throughout the duration of our use of our facility there at the treatment plant. So independent of the upcoming regulations, we feel that we should move this project forward. So they, the panels, control panels are original to the building, forty-seven years old, so they're in need of upgrading. And we've received a proposal from SEH to develop plans and specifications for replacement of these panels in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred dollars, and I'd recommend extending a contract to SEH for this work.
We need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Second.
All in, oh, Tom?
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We also will require a resolution to accept the primary election results from August fourteenth, 2018.
Skip number ten.
Number ten, please.
Or, I'm sorry, ten, I'm sorry. Back to ten. Accepting donations to the city of Austin first.
We want to do that one.
We do want to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution, we need a...
Oh, it's a resolution, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to accepting the primary election results. Tom?
Election was held last week on November, on August sixteenth.
Fourteenth?
The city canvassing board met on August sixteenth to review and certify the results. Councilmember first ward will be Jeff Arnison and Rebecca Waller. Councilmember second ward will be Jason Baskin unopposed. Councilmember third ward, Joyce Pashusta and Brian Heimer. Councilmember at large, Susan Fell Johnson and Jeff Austin, and utility board commissioners, for which two positions are open, Jeannie Sheehan, Jeff Baker, and Steve Greenman. As was noted by Ms. Hazel in the memo, twenty-two point five percent turnout for this primary, which was double the amount we had in 2016 and fourteen, in 2014, so actually a high turnout. And also, it went off flawlessly thanks to the election judges and the citizens that voted. Everything went well. So we'd request approval of that via resolution, Your Honor.
Motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll move on to number twelve, approving consulting services to bid out our group health insurance. Trish?
Good evening, council. For you tonight, for your consideration, is the using of the flexible benefit consulting group to bid out our health insurance, group health insurance. They would prepare our RFP and go through that collection and review process to make recommendations for us for 2019.
Questions?
Any questions? The cost for that service would be sixty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Make the motion to approve that...
It's a resolution?
...farming out of the service.
You change it to a resolution?
Sure.
So moved. Second.
All right. Tom?
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. One more, another resolution with approving an off-site gambling, right? Approving an off-site gambling application for the Fraternal Order of the Eagles. Tom?
The Fraternal Order of the Eagles is requested September twenty-second at the Moore County Fairgrounds to perform some off-site gambling, and it just requires council approval.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Councilmember Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, Your Honor.
Number fourteen's been deleted from the agenda, so we are on to fifteen, granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally-stored vehicles at the following locations. A, six hundred twelfth Street Northeast Turner Property. We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also, B, eleven oh eight Fourth Street Southwest Aberim Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And sixteen, we have a rezoning request petitioned by Jim Pleal...
On behalf of...
Or Burton J. Pleal Trust. Out.
Thank you, Your Honor. During the August fifteenth meeting of the Austin Planning Commission, commission reviewed a request for rezone from Jim Pleal on behalf of Burton J. Pleal Trust. The matter was published for our current council meeting following the Planning Commission meeting, but we need some additional time to allow for posting of the ordinance, so I'd ask the council to continue that matter to the next council meeting on September fourth.
Okay.
That would be a motion.
Move to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay. So the next, the final item here is citizens addressing the council. Is there anyone here, a member of the public that would like to address the council for any reason? It's your chance. Okay. Reports from council. Well, then I go to staff.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
This weekend is the Austin Artworks Festival, downtown Austin, Saturday, nine to five, Sunday, ten to four. It's free to come and take a look.
Well, maybe you could say what replaced Charlie Parr, sing us how...
That's true. Two weeks ago, I let you know that Charlie Parr could not come and perform because of an injury, and we're happy to say that Molly Kate Kestner will be performing in his spot Sunday afternoon at three. So come downtown, enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
Well, tomorrow, we'll be having four hundred motorcyclists come to Austin, Minnesota for the Legion Legacy Motorcycle Rally. It's a scholarship program where they actually have created over twelve million dollars in scholarships for the families of people that have been killed in action. And that's going to be coming to Austin around one-thirty or two tomorrow, and they'll be coming in off of I-90 onto, right there by Duffy's Amoco, and driving down to the Legion Club. So they'll be going past Sterling and then taking a right and going south down to the Legion Club. Six o'clock, they have a hog roast and entertainment, and it's a big deal, and it's going to be quite an attraction. The other thing that's happening this weekend, Sunday, is that bicycle race, and there's going to be eight hundred bicyclists coming to town for that. So we've got a lot of things going on this week in Austin.
Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.[1734.13] Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. And reports from staff?
I don't have any.
Brian, did you have anything? No? Nobody jumping up? Okay. Then, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.